This is, who's responsible for that? Is that something Republic's done in the past? Is something that you were supposed to do?
No, Republic and the city, we do it together and they've had it. You've had it on your website. And if there's anything new, then I give it to the city so that it can be published, or they give me something to give out to the community, then I would...
Because my feeling is a lot of people aren't even familiar with how they exist. Um, I don't know if I'm the only one who feels that way, but, you know, I just wonder, and Justin, you might be a better person to ask, if we were to get the word out more, do you think that something would grow? Or do you think we have met who we...
Quite, to be fair, to be honest, the first nearly twenty months or so, um, we had actually a representative with Recycle Bank that we would meet on a monthly basis. And quite frankly, to be honest, always involved the city to come up with ideas to trump up participation. But you probably remember, that's something that I worked on last week was intimately involved and you would see the little postcards that you would design and we'd send those out. And so we come up with ideas on a monthly basis. But one of the things that we saw, and I actually see you guys some old reports from Republic, that number, quite frankly, did increase. So that same number of participants that we had, we saw the first spike about the third quarter of the month with program, but we slowly started to see that number trickle down over the course of, frankly, a year, year and a half. So we prepped program about three years and again, that number has not, has not changed. The peak that we saw was about twenty-eight percent of participants in the program that were actually redeeming those points. And that, and that's the thing, I mean, it's one thing for people to sign up for the program, but it's another thing for folks to actually redeem those coupons. And that's the thing, and that's the incentive. And that's the thing that we're seeing. If you got ninety-eight people out of, you know, five dollar group, group types that are actually redeemed, is it better use of those funds to say, hey, look, City of McDonald's, here's what we want to do. We want to be an active participant in increasing recycling in this community. So how can we as a community do that? I mean, we have grant programs, we City of McDonald's, we want to create our own grant program and open it up to not just the middle school, but also middle school, high school.
No, sorry, no, do you know how much every, the average person per day?
Most, most about twelve dollars.
A month?
Well, it's not actually that much, it's based on the number of points that you accumulate. So in some cases, you gotta keep, I keep it on...
That is a ballpark number, but...
Yes, about twelve dollars. I mean, it's really the maximum that can...
And something that was very difficult for the school was trying to get enough points to be eligible, to be able to, you know, to move forward with the grant. It was a struggle every, every year to get to that point. And it wasn't because the points weren't out there to be had or to be donated. It was the people who actually had the points were not interested either in redeeming, nor were they interested in providing those points, you know, so that, you know, the school could participate on the highway.
Do you have any other questions?
No question, but just a recommendation. While we're providing our informational piece about if we all decide to, to make this transference, that we would be very clear about letting folks know that recycling is not going away and that as opposed to Recycle Bank, what we've decided to do is to engage in more activities like the recycling of, of paint and...
Batteries.
Batteries, you know, electronic equipment, you know, things like that.
So folks...
Folks aren't really confused because I think what Recycle Bank did was, it was an inducement and people got excited about that. But once they started the practice of recycling, then they stayed with it. I, I don't think I've ever cashed in any of my points. When Gail came forth with, you know, donating it to the school, I got involved in that, but beyond that, I, I've never cashed in any of the points.
And, and I'd like to say that Republic, during that time with Recycle Bank and with the summer program, they've been exceptionally supportive and they have continued to be supportive of the recycling art program that continues throughout the year. They have always been there. They have taken care of expenses for the school, like when we went to show at the rotundo or when they moved forward to go to D.C. and things of that nature. And I would hope that you would still be there for us and I can't imagine that you wouldn't be there for us.
Wouldn't be there.
Hey, Gail, Justin, I see the contract's up March thirty-first. And based on the staff's recommendation of extended terms of the contract, the agreement for a period of one year with three, one year renewal options, depending on agreement of both parties in the April one, two thousand fourteen. So you're recommending that we move forward with this, this contract?
Yeah, yes.
So move there.
Most, any second. Anybody, any, any other question?
We have to make a decision now on the grant. And if we don't, what is that then?
If you can just tell me by the end of the month, that would be fine.
Is that, is that set? Just, just so we, we might have an option.
We're moving to...
I know.
Whether or not to take the ten dollars or go keep it or something.
Right, yeah.
How many residential customers are it? Fifty-seven? And ninety participants, I mean...
That's true, sir.
Yeah.
But to your honor, just, they probably, some of the original people, you have got this wonderful comeback this week, years ago, about four years ago. And I hate to do that, that's, that's being disrespectful. We need to encourage still. So we, we got ample time to do that and we'll give, we'll get in touch with you and let us do it.
Mayor. I, I just wanted, you know, Councilperson Ero just kind of, under his breath echoed a feeling that I was having and I'm, I'm sorry to bring this, bring this up, but you know, he's, he's having the feeling as well. But the, the whole issue of receiving a grant from the individual that we're looking at signing a contract with almost feels like pay to play. So is, is there a way that we can maybe develop a program that fits within the scope of that? You know, we've, we've got a youth advisory council now, you know, there, there are several ways that, that we can do this where folks won't feel like, oh, they gave ten thousand dollars, that's why they're getting the, the contract. You know, you guys have been here with us all the time and you've done great things for our city. So I don't, I personally don't have a problem with expanding the contract and I understand everything as it relates to Recycle Bank and, and those problems, but, you know, we're, we're just, perception is everything. So if we could just maybe agree upon some type of program or some type of use and then you guys would actually serve as sponsor. And I'm not saying that's the final way to do it. We can figure that out.
That's fine.
And that's, that's kind of what I was feeling grateful. It's, um, maybe we didn't get Recycle Bank enough push to help our citizens. I, I hate, I know there's only ninety-eight people that are using, but I hate to take them running away because they were the ones who were to get this ball rolling and...
Well, there's a thousand...
Personally, I, I didn't, I, you don't hear a lot about it here yet, Recycle Bank. And that's maybe that's the city's fault, I don't know whose fault it is, but, you know, I just think maybe that's the conversation we need to have versus having that decision today as far as the grant, Recycle Bank. I know you need it by the end of the month, but, um, that's just kind of my thoughts on that.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're happy either way. You keep Recycle Bank or if you want to develop a program for like on a quarterly basis that the community is able to recycle items that aren't the norm on the curbside residential recycling, or your batteries, your paints, whatever it is, that's fine. In lieu of actually, you know, doing an annual check, that's fine as well. Some municipalities have asked for Recycle Bank to go away and for Republic to provide grant programs. So I do not want to leave the City of McDonald's out of that because we're doing that in another community. So it doesn't mean that there has to be, you know, there can be a program and, and that's fine. Or you can give me one with Recycle Bank. It's fine either way.
Yeah, we've got a motion second on the floor at this time about extending the contract. And I think this would pay some good, certain points, well taken. Uh, anybody have another question? Okay, good price?
The motion is to extend the contract of sanitation services with Republic for one year with three, one year renewal options.
Gentlemen, you heard the motion, been reread. It's just time to call for a motion. You're going to put the motion second.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Justin, thank you, thank you, Monica, for bringing that up, and we'll, we'll get back with you rather than, to, to sit here and sit with the different questions and discuss here. Okay, Chief, uh, let's, uh, we have the floor and let's talk about the radar list of, of three gyms that we might come up with. Thank you, Mayor.
Tonight, I say before you, a little embarrassed, ashamed, aggravated, misunderstood. I don't think I've heard more untrue stories about this radar permit than I've heard in the last month. But tonight, I'm going to go through this process step by step and I hope that we can come to a conclusion on this tonight.
Okay.
Back in nineteen ninety-nine, I brought a permit to the mayor and council with a list of streets that we asked for this body or a body back in nineteen ninety-nine to approve to allow our officers to run radar on those streets. That permit was approved, it was forwarded to DOT and DPS and was sent back to us in nineteen ninety-nine. That was a list that we used to run radar here in the City of McDonald's. In the process, in the early two thousand, two thousand one, two thousand two, the City of McDonald's annexed some properties into the city. We again contacted the Department of Transportation out of, out of Compton and we asked them to send a representative here to the City of McDonald's to assist us in providing a new list to DOT so our officers could provide radar and laser on those streets. A gentleman by the name of Scott Parker came to the City of McDonald's and he went out with Lieutenant Kyle Cowan, who was a supervisor, and still a supervisor today for the City of McDonald's. They came up with sixteen additional streets that we should add to our radar permit. And I have these permits here, I'm not going to go through them, I think we all know where they are. Back in November of two thousand two, I brought that list to the mayor and council and asked that list to be approved. That list was approved by that body and that list was forwarded to the Department of Transportation in Compton. The reason I know that is because I have a letter here in my hand that says they received that list. And on the back of that list is the mayor and council, most of the mayor and council who was here there, their signatures are on that list. As I said here a couple of weeks ago about the process for updating this list, it's a long, lengthy, tiresome process that we go through to adding streets to a radar list for the City of McDonald's. We are a step forward tonight. Back in, and I'm going to give you some round, some, some guesstimate numbers, I did not sit and count those numbers. Back in nineteen ninety-nine, to include the state and city streets, we had fifty-one streets on our radar permit. Back in two thousand two, we had sixty-seven streets on our radar permit. And tonight, I believe, and I, once again, I may be off a number or two, as you know, as we get over my memory, it's not as soon, we are asking for ninety streets to be added or a total of ninety streets to be on the two thousand fourteen list for approval of radar and laser here in the City of McDonald's. I was questioned a couple of weeks ago about how do we get those streets on the list? And I think I answered those questions to the best of my knowledge. But then I was asked again, how we got those streets on the list? Again, I answered those questions to the best of my knowledge. Then I was asked a third time. Ms. Benson, I want to respond to your question. Is that in nineteen ninety-nine, four of the streets that are in your subdivision were already on there. The night, the list that I bring you tonight only is adding two more lists or two more streets to that list. So that would be a total of six streets in Wesley Lakes. Four was already on there in nineteen ninety-nine and we've gone back and corrected some of the spelling. We've added some, uh, some other additional information on there, but the two streets, folks stolen drive and current code were not in existence, to my understanding, in nineteen When we put these streets together, my officers bring information to me about the length of the street, the width of the street, how many pedestrians are on the street, how many people live in subdivision. I take all that information and I gather it and I try to present a proper list to the mayor and council of what I think we need to do to reduce the number of speakers in the City of McDonald's. Now, Channel Two can write whatever story she wishes to write about me in my apartment, but what she wrote is not the truth. Now, there are some things I can't get in tonight because there are some legal issues that we are dealing with here in the City of McDonald's. And so I won't address those issues. I've been asked not to by our attorney and I won't address them. Most of you have known me for a long, long time. I've been with the department since nineteen ninety-five. I was appointed the Assistant Public Safety Director by Mayor Coglin and the mayor in nineteen ninety-seven. We split the departments in ninety-nine or two thousand, somewhere in that, that vicinity, and I assumed the role of police chief. And there have been a number of times that my integrity and my honesty have been called into question. Every time that my integrity and my honesty is called into question, I have to keep my mouth shut. One thing I'm not is a liar and one thing I'm not is untrue. I do the best I can for the City of McDonald's as the police chief. I give you a lot of hours that you don't even know about and to the citizens. I work six and seven days a week. I spend a lot of time away from my newly married wife, who can vouch, that I receive calls all during the night. I'm here, when you call me, I'm here. When this mayor and council, the city administration, these citizens call me, I respond to their request. I have always been a chief that I will bend over backwards to help anybody. No matter what time of day or night it is, I'm there. This is not a job for me. This is my career. I take being the police chief in the City of McDonald's serious. I've said this many times before, I have a great staff that works for me. We've had issues in the past, but I've dealt with those issues. Morale couldn't be higher in the City of McDonald's Police Department as it, as it is today. But then you get a story like Channel Two who wants to run her own store and that's okay. She's entitled to write whatever she wants to write and say whatever she wants to say. But the truth of the facts is this, we did not intentionally run radar on those streets starting back in two thousand three and two thousand four. That was not an intentional act. As you know, these radar permits, certificates, everything is handled through our training division at the City of McDonald's Police Department. Somewhere in the process, the ninety-nine list, as, as you, as you can see, they look the same, other than you have to look on the back and look at the signatures and the dates. Somebody took the ninety-nine list out of a, of a very organized folder that we keep and stuck it with our radar permit. So since two thousand three or two thousand four, we have been running radar and laser on sixteen streets here in the, in the City of McDonald's that we shouldn't have been writing them. I stand here as a chief and I take full responsibility for what has happened with this radar permit. Even though the, the permit is not something I directly deal with, as you know, we've probably had seven or eight people that have gone through the training division and their hands have been on this permit. This permit has probably been before a municipal court in fact for many times. I couldn't give you a number, but I don't know how many, how many times it's been, but nobody has ever called that we're working on a ninety-nine list and we're using that two thousand two street list. So there's a lot that goes into preparing the list and sending it to the mayor and council. We look at how fast people are going through subdivision. Twenty-five miles an hour through a subdivision. The law says we can't write a ticket until you're going eleven miles over the posted speed limit. So if the speed limit is twenty-five miles in your subdivision, you have to be going thirty-six miles per hour before you can write a ticket unless it's a school. Do you know how quickly it takes for a child to walk out in front of a car doing thirty-six miles an hour and that person doesn't see the child and they can't stop in time and they hit a child? This list that I provided to you tonight, it's not perfect. This is something that we think we need to do to slow people down and protect the citizens of McDonald's. I stand before you tonight and I'm asking you to accept the list that I have provided to you, and that is the two thousand thirteen radar street list. Mayor and council, this is your list. If there are streets on here that you don't want over here, you can remove those streets and I will immediately send this list back to DOT and ask for approval. This is not my list, this is my recommendation to each of you. We may not ever run radar on those streets and I'm asking tonight, but it's nice to be able to have the ability to do that when there are issues in your neighborhood. You asked me to provide some maps, I don't know if the little maps are going to show up on our overhead, but I do have the big maps here and Ms. James, we can focus on that here. If you'll see, this is an updated list, the yellow lines, it may be hard to see, the distance, the yellow lines, if you can see that on the map, are the lines that represent what I'm asking for tonight. Those yellow lines depict the streets that would be incorporated or already on our two thousand fourteen radar list.
I, I can't discern what I'm reading at. Okay. I, I have a couple of comments to that.
That's, Chief, that is reflective of ninety, a total of ninety. That's probably what the mayor and council...
See, that's going to do that.
There, there aren't ninety lines on there, I mean, there, anyway, I, I was following the, the, uh...
So, you guys, those are straight, some of those may have...
I understand that.
The other map that I brought, yes, you showed that out, I broke it down into districts and some of them are going to be overlapped. District one, there are eleven point eight four miles of roads and district one that we would be allowed to run radar our way.
Give me four hundred forty foot so that people in the area can know.
It's on bottom right. All right? District two, to my knowledge, has eight point two eight miles of roads in it that we can run radar our way. District three has twelve point eight six miles of roads incorporated in that district that we can run radar laser on. And district four has thirteen point two six miles of roads that we can run radars laser on. So that's the information about the bouncing tonight and I think each of you have a copy of the two thousand fourteen list. I'm asking for you to approve that list tonight. If there are some roads that you would like to take off, I'm glad to take those off and resimilant to you.
You got it. Okay, Chief, you have a recommendation? Anybody, yes, ma'am?
I, I do have, I do have a...
I was just...
Chief, Chief, first of all, you, you started out saying that, that you were, you were frustrated and by, by calling my name, I think that there is a, a gross misunderstanding of intent based on the things that, that you said. First of all, I need to say that I thoroughly understand how frustrating it can be to have the media to report something that is untrue. I'm a living witness, so I thoroughly understand that frustration and how that feels, first of all. Secondly, I did ask that question of you several different times because what I was trying to do was to understand the process that you use for identifying which areas would be to be placed on this list. Up to this point, I didn't even know that the city had to have permission to run radar. I just thought that was just something that's automatic that police have the opportunity to do. So as an elected person, I find myself in a situation where citizens are watching news that I had, I wasn't even, to be honest with you, I had not seen. But what I was trying to do was to obtain information so that I would be better able to respond to my constituency. When I looked at the list, I did see several areas in Wesley Lakes, I saw several areas in terms of streets that are in district two. I didn't ask for that. What I asked for, and I asked for, it wasn't your, your, your request, it was my request. What I asked for was a map that put dots on the map in terms of where we would be running radar. Because what I needed to do was to be able to see where those areas were and to respond to the citizens that live in that area if in fact they asked me a question. Now, Wesley Lakes specifically, because I do use the board as the pulse of that community. Wesley Lakes is very pleased with the fact that we have police presence and protection and I am grateful for that. Now, there's something that you said to me today that you did tell me last week and it was really what I was trying to drive you to do was to just give me the answer that I needed in order to speak to the community and that answer was how fast people are going in a given area. You kept telling me about this five hundred feet visibility and, and all of this other stuff. What I wanted you to say, what I was hoping to hear was that there are concerns that come out of these areas that basically cause us to want to run additional safety and security measures to make sure that we are protecting our citizens, our children, et cetera. But I, I, I didn't have that information. So if somebody asks me, what process do you go through? I'm not going to say I don't know. I'm going to ask you. And as a staff person, we have to understand that sometimes we do get questions because as elected folks, the people out there and other individuals, they're going to hold our feet to the fire. So we rely on our staff to be able to provide us with the information that we need in order to respond to them. It was not an indictment, just like I asked a question tonight. Please understand that people have expressed concern about the municipal court falling under the jurisdiction of the police chief. That concern has been expressed. I didn't create it, I didn't fabricate it, I didn't make it up, but it has been expressed. So as an elected person who reports to the people out here and people beyond, it is my responsibility to ask questions that I always don't want to ask, Chief, because you have been there for me. You are one of those people that I highly esteem. But when my bosses say, ask the question, I have to ask the question. So I hope that there's nothing but love between where I'm sitting and your standing, but I am required by oath to just ask the question. I asked for dots, I didn't ask for all of those. That's it, just show me where it is so I know where the people are that I'm going to have to respond to.
Other, other comment, yes?
I don't have any questions. I, I'd actually just like to move on with our motion to, to approve the radar list that has presented to us tonight.
I second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion, babe, in a second, relative to the, uh, nine, give or take one, two... Okay, we've got a motion made in the second relative to the, uh, nine, give or take one or two streets, uh, seeking your approval. Any other comments? Any kind of have any comments? Uh, motion second on the floor, Ms. Price. Please receive the motion in the second.
The motion is to approve the radar list as presented tonight by the police chief and to authorize all of the mayor and council to sign this document.
And, okay, this time, would you please vote relative to the motion in the second on the floor? Anne?
There are seven in place.
Chief, thank you so much, America. Thank you. Once again, I apologize for any embarrassment because you brought me to the seat, but I promise you, I will click, we'll get this rectified immediately and we'll be sitting down with the staff to address it.
Would you please leave one of those maps with me?
I'll leave both of them.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Thanks, Melissa.